Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight, as well as those that's tuning in. I am part of the Williamson County Anti-Drug Coalition. I'm the executive coordinator for this coalition. And what our main premises for this organization is to basically discuss about or try to prevent teenage use of tobacco, prescription drug use, as well as alcohol. The Williamson County Anti-Drug Coalition is hosting this town hall meeting in public awareness to address the social hosting and teenage binge drinking. While discussing with our expert panel, the three F's of family, financial, and future costs that may have an effect on our youth in this great community of ours. Our mission of WCADC is to dedicate it to making parents aware of substance abuse among children ages 14 to 18 in Williamson County, and to implement effective strategies that prevent substance abuse in Williamson County through building community partnerships. Our coalition has partnered with many organizations in our community, as well as WCTV and the Drug Free Action Alliance to promote the message to address the social host law by saying, "Parents who host lose the most. Don't be a party to teenage drinking." We have a guest speaker that was somewhat of a child prodigy that used sports as an outlet by the time he was 12. He won his second Southern Regional Title in tennis, plus the Sportsmanship Award in Tennessee and in the 11th State Southern Section. As a teen, he had a grueling schedule of school, practice, and workouts that began two hours before school started and went for two hours afterwards. But he loved it, he worked hard at it, and even taking the extra classes so he could graduate early, looking forward to the college and career in professional tennis. Does this sound like a teen that you know or love to be around? Teenagers love to party, especially during prime and graduation season. Often, alcohol is involved. Some parents think that hosting a team drinking party in their home will help kids stay out of trouble. While their intentions are good, it is legal, illegal, unsafe, and unhealthy for anyone under the age of 21 to drink alcohol. Daily, about 8,000 youths throughout the country will certainly take their first alcoholic beverage of alcohol. Youth who begin drinking before the age of 15 are five times more likely to develop alcohol dependency or alcohol abuse later in life than those who are drinking at or after the age of 21. Additionally, heavy alcohol used by adolescents has long-term effects on the brain development. One of the most important questions asked by the pride survey is how easy is it for students to get access to tobacco, alcohol, and drugs? Communities and schools can often underestimate the availability of these substances to younger students. 7.1% of 4th graders, 19.3% of middle schools state that they have access to alcohol in this county. With 29.3% high school students state that they have used alcohol in the past 30 days, which 28.2% of them use alcohol at a friend's house. We have to change this for the future of our community, as a community. Even though we by far have the best quality of life in the state and rank highly among the nation in health, education, and job growth, we still have to look at our youth for tomorrow. According to the county health rankings, Williamson County is 14% in excessive drinking, while Tennessee alone is 9%. How can we become effective in our community to lower this rate and not the highest in the state when it comes to excessive drinking? Hopefully, we can get that answer tonight with a solution to the problem. Tonight with our expert panel that consists of law enforcement, district attorney for general courts, treatment and county school systems, we'll be speaking about that tonight. Now, with tonight's great speaker, we will share his story about how one split decision changed his life forever from becoming a professional tennis player by deciding to drink and drive.
They say a picture is worth a thousand words. If you watched me walk to this podium, you saw a picture of what can happen to a person who decides to drink and drive. I was just like you, facing decisions every day about my lifestyle and actions, excited about what my future is going to hold. Now, I'm living with the consequences of my choices. You just watched a documentary about the struggles that my family and I have gone through because I made that mistake. But I don't want something like this to happen to you. I didn't realize when I drove away from the bar that night that I would be giving my drinks away. I just thought I was having a good time. But now, I will never be a world-class tennis player, and I have to live with that. I'm here today to share my story with you in hopes that it will inspire you to make better decisions than I made, and hopefully support those around you making good decisions as well. My entire life is different now because that I won't hide. For truth be told, the problem actually started several years before. That was not the first time I had driven drunk. I actually started taking alcohol from my parents' liquor cabinet when I was about 12 years old. I started doing it instantly, just as a child doing something his parents told him not to do. But as you all know, alcohol is addictive, and as I got older, I wanted to drink more and more. By this time, I was in high school. I had a steady pattern of drinking heavily on the weekends. At this time, I didn't even realize there was a problem. I still practiced tennis several hours each day, starting at 5:00 AM. I was able to maintain my national ranking and earn a full scholarship to the University of Tennessee. Looking at me from the outside, I was a healthy, happy teenager with this whole life ahead If anyone knew what was really going on with me, they were not brave enough to say. I hid my alcohol use from my parents and others that might have disapproved. This loving was no one to confront me about my destructive behavior, no one to ask me to make better choices, no one to encourage me to get help. I was on the road a lot, playing tennis and hanging out with older kids, and I started drinking alcohol made me cool. It seemed like it was no big deal, and nobody was doing it. But it was a big deal. I was gambling my future, and now my future is drastically different. I was once one of the top 10 tennis players in this country, and now I struggle to button my shirt and tie my shoes. I thought I had a lot of friends in high schools, too. Everybody certainly accepted me as a physically fit athlete with a drink in my hand. Funny thing, though, most of them disappeared when I became physically disabled and confined Some said that it not including realizing more because my disability meant hard for me to get around, but I think it may be because I was a constant reminder of the reality that tried to deny, that drinking and acting irresponsibly can cost you your future. I know it's almost impossible to deny the consequences of drinking and driving around. I'm okay with that. It's all up here speaking today to make it impossible to deny that there can be serious consequences when it comes to alcohol. If you are drinking alcohol, using illegal prescription drugs, or just drugs of that matter, then you got a problem. And I'm here to tell you that there are people out there to help you. I'll help you. Well, I hope my story has convinced you not to drink and drive. I hope it has also inspired you in other ways as well. I hope you will never look back with regret on a missed opportunity to help someone else make a positive choice for their future. I want to thank you for your time and attention today, and ask you to visit my website at I will leave with my personal mission statement. I want people to live, live to serve, live to offer hope, live to receive help, live to make good choices, live to live to inspire others and yourself.
My name is Sandy Schmal. I am the Program Director for the SAP program in Williamson County and the other counties that Star serves. And tonight, I have the panelists that I'm going to introduce. This is Dr. Teresa Boyd next to me, is the Executive Director of the Guidance Center; Kim Hepler, the District Attorney; Sergeant Travis O'Neill, Fairview Police Department; Lieutenant Roy Russell, Fairview Police Department; Captain Alan Laney, the School Resource Officers in the Crime Prevention Unit; and Officer Mark Wood, Dare in Brentwood Police Officer. I'm going to start with a few questions, and then we'll open it up to questions from the audience. Panelists, can you tell the audience more about the Tennessee Social Host Law?
I will take the first shot at that. I am Captain Alan Laney, Williamson County Sheriff's Office. Basically, this law puts responsibility on the adults that are a party with knowledge of young people who participate in drinking. If they provide it, if they host it in their homes, if they even, as a business, allow it to happen, then this law makes them liable for whatever happens. And if this person that they allowed to drink gets involved in an accident where there's personal injury or death, then they are going to receive a mandatory sentence from that through our Delinquency Act that is the full 100% sentence for that particular crime, which is a Class A misdemeanor for this particular offense. So it's something that was put into effect, as we all know, young people sometimes make a decision based on what they don't know, but this puts the adult in charge of seeing that they don't participate in this, or they're going to receive the consequences, not only the liability financially, but also from the law.
And I will just chime in a little bit on that. When we talk about the penalties for someone who might be involved in social hosting or having a party at their home where alcohol is being provided to those under the age of 21, the penalty is, at this point, a Class A misdemeanor, which includes a sentence of up to 11 months, 29 days in jail. But I think more importantly, what people need to understand is it is a mandatory 100 hours of community service that is required, as well as the potential for loss of a driver's license by the person who is hosting the party. And the law is clear that those penalties may be in addition to any other charges that the state would pursue at that time. So it certainly is possible that at the same time as the social hosting is going forward, that there are charges levied of contributing to the delinquency of a minor. Those are, again, all Class A misdemeanors, but depending on the number of young people that are at a party, you could certainly be looking at 15 to 20 additional misdemeanor charges filed against a parent or someone who is hosting that party. So the law recognizes certainly the severity of those decisions, as well as, I think, the role model that adults should play, and therefore, the legislature saw fit to impose these additional penalties against those folks. And the law is also clear, certainly there is civil liability that may be going along with any criminal charges that are filed, and again, the law recognizes that, even if there is a prosecution pursued under that social hosting law, that that does not prevent or preclude civil liability from going forward.
Thank you. What do you do if you know a parent is providing alcohol at an event?
I'll take that one. Mark, give it your best shot.
I'll give my best shot. If you know a parent is providing alcohol at an event, my personal opinion, I think you should speak to that parent, and if you know about the social hosting law, make them aware of it. They may not be aware of it. They may believe that they're just being a friend to their kids and a friend to their child's friends, and that it's no big deal. A lot of parents believe that, well, if we're keeping the keys, we're doing everything safe, and we're being responsible with that. But they just may not be aware that they are breaking the law. So that's the first thing that I would do, is make sure they're aware of the law, and make sure of the legal consequences of that, as well as the civil consequences.
I think Mark's right on track of making that reasonable appeal to that adult, understanding that the child may not be in a position to make good decisions. Blake touched on something that I think is just really important, that his personal introduction to alcohol happened in his own home. I think the very best thing that, as a parent, we could do is model good behavior, and one of the best ways to model good behavior is not to have the alcohol available. I know that sounds a little radical in today's economy, but just making sure that, hey, you're not being a friend to the kid by opening up your home to have alcohol there. You could be leading that individual, those individuals, down a road that they don't want to go down.
Right, thank you. Is it illegal to give my own child alcohol in my house? Is it illegal for if I had a child that was...
I'll take that one. Yes, it is. Depending on the amount, there is a way out, it's called, under Tennessee law and most laws in this country, consumption or possession of de minimis quantity. That means so minute an amount that it can't alter their state. If it's enough to alter their state, then you are violating the law, then it's illegal for you to do that. And that's contributing to delinquency.
But I think even if you have that in the law, as a parent, you have to think, "Am I sending a mixed message to my child by letting them take a sip?" And some parents are, not all, but some parents are naive enough to think that, "My child will only drink when I let them drink at my house." And, you know, if you're, think that way, I think that's a very naive way to think. But yeah, if it's over that amount, certainly against the law.
Thank you. What could happen financially to the accused when it comes to the Tennessee Social Host Law?
Well, I think just, and I certainly am not a civil attorney, but the law does certainly provide for a cause of action. So certainly, there could be a civil lawsuit, and depending on what's involved, if someone is at your home drinking alcohol, if someone is involved in a car wreck and you have provided the alcohol that led to that, or you turn the other cheek knowing that that was going on, you certainly could be facing potential criminal and civil liability. So there certainly are costs there, just on a minor scale. I mean, when you talk about social hosting and the possibility of losing a driver's license, you may be able to get a restricted driver's license that allows you to go to work, but it may interfere with your ability to hold down a job. It may require you to seek other ways to attend to social activities. And again, you're being required, at a minimum, to perform 100 hours of community service, as well as with any criminal prosecution, there are court costs that are associated with those cases, which can get into the hundreds, even thousands of dollars. There may be fines imposed on a misdemeanor. It could be up to $2,500. There are attorney's fees. So from that perspective, just very simply, as it relates to the court end of it, there are certainly costs that are involved.
And I would add, from the treatment component, there's cost involved as well. So if you've got to go to DUI classes, that's a high cost, and then any treatment involvement.
Also, just to add to what she said, it's mandatory now that, when you're caught, you pay for that treatment upfront as part of your sentence.
Thank you. How can parents help change the public perception of the harmless rite-of-passage myth when it comes to social hosting in our community?
I think we talked on it just briefly earlier about being a role model, about, you know, every parent would like to have their kid love them. And the best way to love them is help them to be independent and make good decisions. The best way to help them do that is model how good decisions are made. And, you know, as tough as that might sound, to abstain from alcohol until you're legally able to do that. But beginning to set that example at the very young age, we were just talking briefly before about with the way we're evolving with the different technologies and social... gosh, in my day, you know, you had to sneak into a movie to see some of the stuff. Now, that comes on prime time. Imagine if Instagram and Facebook and, gosh, I don't even know all the different little technologies that are out there, were around in those days, how difficult it'd be. But setting that standard, that I know you want to get involved, you want to do these things, but you're not at an age, as Blake pointed out, as a young person, to make those choices because you don't want to go down that road.
And I think what Lieutenant Russell was referring to a little bit is, "To be a parent, not a peer." We often hear that phrase, but I think it is so important for parents to recognize that, at this age, you are not, your role is not to be the child's best friend, but it is to help them understand what is the best course of action to take going forward in their lives. And when you try to become a peer and you buy into, "Well, everyone's doing it, so we should have a drinking party at our house," or you turn the other cheek because it's so much easier not to have to argue or discipline your child. I think from that perspective, if parents together, and if you see it happening with your child's friend's parent, to recognize and say, "You know what? That's not an appropriate party for you to go to, and it's not acceptable to us, and you're going to have to stay home tonight or look for some other graduation party to attend that I'm comfortable with." But I think it is so important for parents to be willing to take that stand, not only with their children, but with other parents in the community.
Absolutely, thank you. Now, we'll open it up to the audience, and any additional questions that audience members may have?
I have a couple of questions.
I had a couple of questions to ask. First, I wanted to ask, what is law enforcement doing, since we have law enforcement from different agencies present? What are the various law enforcement agencies doing to deter underage drinking?
In Fairview, a lot of what we're trying to do is get back in the neighborhoods. I'm a supervisor over evening shift, so kids are getting out of school, driving up and down the road when they get out of school from the high schools. But we're trying to get back and let them know we're there to help them, be role models for them, to where they may not be getting it, not everybody has a good role model at home, unfortunately. Trying to give them that opportunity by letting them know that we're there and letting them see us, and also talking with the parents. We think, most of us think that logically, it's not okay to let a child drink, but you'd be surprised how many people actually will call us and ask if it's okay. And most of us wouldn't even ask that. So letting the parents know, figuring out a way to promote awareness to them, we promote awareness to the kids through DARE programs and things like that. We have to figure out a way to talk to the parents and let them know that this isn't okay, and you can get in big trouble for it.
Okay.
I'll add to it, from our perspective at the Williamson County Sheriff's Office, we have a school resource officer in every high school, middle school, and elementary, and this mentoring program goes from elementary on now with us. And each of our high school resource officers look for these kids that we feel like are going to... going to be the ones who are most likely to get out and drink and drive and try to reach out to them. We've, we've helped a lot of people through that program before they hit prom, before they hit graduation and talk to them. But they do, and, and that enables us to work hand in hand with what the school system here is doing to, to get that message across, you know, with that cooperative effort between law enforcement and the school system.
All right. And I might-
I know with, with our department, we, we have an aggressive stance on if we find underage teens consuming alcohol, we will prosecute them. And we've had several cases here lately. We've had some large parties and we've been invited to, not on purpose, but usually by neighbors and other people, you know, we get invited to those and, you know, we will, we will prosecute. It's a, it's a case by case basis, we, of course, but in, in a lot of cases, whether they're just in possession of alcohol underage or whether they're actually consuming the alcohol underage. And, you know, it just seems to be a lot of these parties, there's always several teens that have been binge drinking and are highly intoxicated, some to the point where they can't stand up and take and care for themselves at all. So we definitely prosecute in that case. But in every case, we're going to let the parents know what's happening. And with our DARE program, we're in the high schools as well, and Officer Beatty, my partner, he's in the audience tonight, he and I go into Brentwood High School and Ravenwood High School, and we, we speak to almost every freshman class, every freshman student, rather, in our classes. And we focus a lot on underage drinking, the effects of alcohol, and definitely the effects of drinking and driving. And, and we cover a lot of the consequences of that. So we try to get that message to them and give them a chance to ask questions and, and find out information from a trustworthy source and not just, you know, from Instagram or YouTube, places like that, so.
And I might just add that from the district attorney's perspective, we work very closely with the juvenile court here so that first time drug and alcohol offenders participate in a program that is educational in nature, that talks about the consequences, that gives them an idea that if you don't take notice now while you're under the age, this is what's going to happen, not only when you hit 18, because you're going to be in adult court, but certainly between 18 and 21, where you're still not allowed to drink alcohol, that those consequences, if you're driving for DUI, mean jail time. So we really try from our perspective to participate in an educational forum, but also to recognize that if you come before us and you are under the age and you're drinking, there's consequences and you may lose your license. It may mean that mom and dad are going to drive you to the prom or drive you to the movies, that there are real life things that make it very inconvenient and difficult if you choose to follow that path.
I was reading recently in a magazine about a hotline that a community has so that teens who are at one of these parties, if they see inappropriate behavior, they just call that hotline and notify the school. And I thought to myself, it would be better, if the school is closed, it would certainly be better if they notified law enforcement rather than the school. Do we have anything in place in this community like that?
911.
Okay. That's the hotline, okay. And my final question is, what are the penalties for selling alcohol to minors?
Some of that does fall even under another section of that social hosting law where it does talk about it being a misdemeanor, which is a maximum of 11 months, 29 days in the county jail. Fairview has been very active, actually, and you might want to talk about that a little bit, and going after convenience stores and other locations that are selling alcohol to minors. And we've worked very closely with them when those cases come before us to ensure as part of any settlement or negotiations with that case, that the clerk is required to complete a course that's put on by the Alcohol and Beverage Commission here in the state so that they know what they're doing and that it doesn't happen again. But do you want to talk a little bit about what you're doing?
Sure, thank you, General. We have actively, some would prefer to it as a sting operation, but to find someone that will cooperate with us and with the understanding, you're trying to buy alcohol for someone under the age. Once a merchant has gone through the difficulty of that, potentially not only paying the court fines and, and the other penalties that go with, but the loss of revenue because their license is suspended for a protracted period of time, it doesn't take long for the word to get out. And what we're finding is merchants realize, I've got a lot on the table here, I've got a lot at stake, and I'm going to educate my employees that you'd better be good at math before you make that sale because it's going to cost. But then the, once that happens, the message gets out to the community. You know, it's, hey, you're just wasting your time if you're trying to buy underage here. It's, it's going to be a difficult task for you. When you do these things, it's painful, there's pushback, there's people that are, you know, suggesting that you're just out to put them out of business, when in fact, what you're doing is protect the entire community. And, and that's the message we'd like to get out.
I'd like to add to what, what they're doing up there, just as something I witnessed when I was off duty. I saw an individual enter one of our businesses in the Fairview area and just to buy a pack of cigarettes. This guy was obviously an adult. He was not an underage juvenile by any means, you could tell, but he didn't have his identification with him. And the young clerk there in Fairview wouldn't serve him, wouldn't give him to him, said, you'll have to come back, bring me your driver's license, some form ID, or I can't sell you these. And I thought, you know, that's amazing that that's happening, but that's, that's what this work will do.
That's good. Thank you.
I have a question actually for Blake, if, if you're prepared to answer. And the question was, since we've been talking about the different charges and so forth and penalties for underage drinking and drinking and driving, can you tell us, can you tell me whether or not there were any criminal charges filed against you or fines that you had to pay? Talk a little bit about that?
I don't, um, I don't think so. I think they, they saw me in the hospital and, you know, I was in a coma for four months. And, um, and then, um, you know, I, I mean, they certainly could have pressed charges against me because I was in the wrong the whole time about a lot of things. But no charges were ever filed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. This question is for Teresa, Ms., Dr. Teresa Boyd. I was just wondering if you could talk a little bit about the treatment regiment, maybe the average age of people that are coming through the guidance center that, you know, as far as youth and whether or not you're getting that families involved in that treatment regiment?
Sure. Just last year, well, between July 2013 and April 2014, we had over 100 youth between the ages of 14 and 17 come in for therapy who had either a primary diagnosis or a secondary diagnosis of substance abuse. And some, it could be, they could have also co-occur and they could have a mood disorder, depression, but we have some that have primary diagnosis. So that's pretty, it's pretty significant. Obviously, at this point, we would offer individual counseling along with family counseling and other support systems. It's an awful disease to treat without having a support system. So individual, family. We also offer more extensive assessments with that so we can come up with treatment plans, also relapse prevention plans, and we work with other community agencies. For some areas of treatment that we cannot provide, for instance, like inpatient, if we do an assessment and we find out that individual and family is not enough, then we want to reach out to other community members that can do inpatient treatment if they need something more extensive or if they might need. First of all, we've had people show up that have, we've had teens show up, they're drunk. And so we had to make sure that most importantly, not only with drinking, but also with, with their parents' drugs that they've taken at home, that they need to be detoxed. So obviously, they went to the hospital first and then we got them in a detox and then kind of stepped them down from inpatient into, into our place and outpatient. Right now, we are offering also, this is after the fact as well, but we, we offer DUI classes there for first time and second time offenders. So, and we're getting ready to start classes for juveniles with the Prime for Life. So there's a lot of options. I want to be encouraging about this because there's a lot of people that come through and, and we see people getting help. The thing is, if you recognize that your children are not acting right or you, you get heads up about that, it's always good to at least come in, get a screening, or if they, again, go through the, the criminal justice system, it's, it's, it's okay. It's, it's good to get help and we can help them through, not only counseling, but some people qualify for medical management that can help them with that as well.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, but I did have a third question, and this is for Ms. Schmal. I was going to ask you, can you talk a little bit about what the Stars counselors are doing in the schools to, to help with this problem that we have in Williamson County?
Sure, sure. The Star specialists, we have Star specialists in every middle and high school, and they work with students on a number of issues. So it could be anything from, you know, teenage drinking, you know, kids come in that are experimenting with drugs and alcohol, with a myriad of other issues. And that's just something I was actually going to follow up with Teresa, just to talk a little bit and just to encourage with, from the social host law and parents experiment or allowing their children to experiment at their own home, parents, other parents letting them do it at their friend's house. It's that a lot of times what we need to realize as a parent, because I have a child, 18-year-old child of my own, is that the younger we allow our kids to drink, the more likely that they're going to become dependent on that substance. A lot of times we, we think that it's going to be experimentation, and that's what sometimes we see. You know, even in middle school, kids come in and they'll talk about experimenting with drugs or alcohol. And we, as Star specialists, you know, feel that it's extremely important to talk to the kids. So we reinforce what they're hearing from the DARE program, what they're hearing from their, you know, their school resource officers, what they're hearing from their teachers, their principals. I mean, I think as a community and the law enforcement, we're trying to reinforce that on all avenues, but we need the parents' help. I think that that's one of the biggest components, is that with, you know, we need someone in the, from that perspective, to understand what they're doing to their, potentially doing to their kid by allowing them to even experiment. You know, if you go out and read research, and I think Teresa can probably talk a little more about that, is that the younger the kid does start experimenting, the more likely that they're going to become dependent on a substance. And if they start drinking at 12, then the likelihood that they're, it's going to go into smoking marijuana or using harder drugs by the time they're in high school and then potentially needing treatment later on, I think is probably more likely. Teresa, would you?
I would, I would definitely agree with that. And, and again, when we have somebody that comes in with a diagnosis, it's rare that we just find out that they're just using alcohol. It's usually combined with some type of pill that they've got from somebody else. And, and I will add, many times when we have to call parents in, we have to educate parents. It's, it's hard to, to sometimes accept that you put your child in counseling and they've got arrested, or they come in and then we do an assessment and then we have to explain to them, yes, you know, they're on this path. Or, you know, it may be use, it may be abuse, it may be dependence, it may be addiction. And sometimes it's hard to explain to parents to let them know this. And sometimes it's, they don't believe right away. So we, we do need for parents to tune in, to help us, to, we need volunteers that Williamson County Anti-Drug Coalition, if you want to help us out there, we need you to be at the, you know, at the center to, to contribute to this expertise and especially guest speakers like yourself, Blake.
Thank you.
Two questions. First one is, are the consequences the same for 18-year-old party hosts and parent hosts?
They are. As I tell, tell young people all the time, really the game changes once you turn 18 and you're considered an adult going forward. The law does not distinguish between ages. It really just focuses on whether you are providing the alcohol, whether you're present, whether you're encouraging it, whether it's at your property. It doesn't say it has to be your house, it's your property, which is why at times it could affect some other establishment. Maybe you're having a party, maybe you own a farm and you're having it out in the field. And we've had that happen. That would fall under the social hosting law and you would be held responsible even if you are only 21 and you've invited a bunch of, of college friends over who are under 21.
Thank you. My second last question is, are there any other law enfor, local law enforcement agencies other than the Brentwood Police Department providing an education for middle and high schoolers?
You're referring to like the DARE program?
Mm-hmm.
The Stars program is the only one I'm aware of at this time.
Okay. Do, do any of you guys have plans for a program that-
For a high school, middle and high? The county had a DARE program since 1989 up until about a year or so ago after Sandy Hook. And we were providing officers who were doing what Mark and Sam do, classroom duties, just about most all day long, because there are so many kids in our schools now. And with the advent of the Sandy Hook tragedy there, we decided we had to focus more on the security there. So what we did was we took our officers out of the classroom. We were in the middle school at sixth grade levels as far as we were going with the basic curriculum. And, and our attention has been on security since that time. That was the agreement that we made with the public and the county commission, that we would provide a safe zone. And we just, it costs so much to do that, we're limited on how many people we can provide. And to provide that security, it took all of our personnel and all the money we could get our hands on at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Teresa, you mentioned that parents can bring in a child for an assessment if they suspect there's a problem. Can you just talk a little bit about what that assessment looks like so a parent might understand a little more?
Obviously, if they're underage, we would like for the parent to come in. In the state of Tennessee, we have to be careful though because teens that are 16 don't absolutely have to involve their parents in their assessment. So we try to get the parent involved because we want to make sure that they're part of that. So we, we try to encourage at the beginning. The assessment really is, we're going to look at whatever the mom says is going on or the dad says is going on, or if, you know, sometimes we have folks that live with, in foster homes, whoever, whoever is their person they want there. We like to have other support systems. We get the information. We talk to them about what the signs and symptoms are. We're very open with resources. We are very open about referrals. We're open about what the, if it is, if it proceeds to a disease, what that can do to them. So we kind of just assess and figure out where they're at. Is it just really, is it just use? Is it abuse? Is it dependence or has it moved to addiction? So the assessment is really looking at some of the family history, some of the social history. Obviously, we want to look at the legal history, that's always a part of it. We want to look at any of their social history, like in their family support, and then medical history. Sometimes, like I said, some folks may benefit from medication, so we might- Sometimes, like I said, some folks may benefit from medication, so we might want to know a little bit about their medical history, because many people who have alcohol diagnoses or drug diagnoses tend to have what we call co-occurring, and usually things like depression, anxiety, which we find often in the teens. Another common one is bipolar disorder. So, that's a little bit more complicated that we, because we have to treat them at the same time. So, it's really about getting information, educating them, and then coming up with a plan on how we're going to help this teen get better.
And if I might just add, anytime we have a case that involves a juvenile, and even if you're talking about someone who has been involved between 18 and 21 with underage drinking, usually, as part of our disposition, we will ask them to do a drug and alcohol assessment, and to follow any recommendations. So, if part of the concern, or the reason for that underage drinking is because there is some sort of dependency, we prefer not to just punish, but to educate and see if we can't get treatment. So, we will try to make sure that that's part of any resolution of those kinds of cases.
And that's true, too, because we have contracts with, like, BOPP and federal, and we do the assessments, and then we have to report back. And for the ones that are court ordered, we need to, you know, send a report back every time they come to therapy, and where they're at, and that type of thing.
I knew somebody this year who had a child who got a DUI, and I really, and I've had three kids go through high school, and they're in college now, I was shocked at what the family went through with the DUI, and the amount of money that it cost. And since this was being taped, I just thought it was a great opportunity for any of you or all of you to kind of talk about the process that the kids have to go through with a DUI, or an adult. But I think with the breathalyzer, and the money the court costs, the attorneys, it was just, I was blown away. So, I just thought it'd be a good opportunity for you to speak to that.
Do you all want to start with the stop, and I'll pick it up once that comes to court?
Well, the stop itself is usually going to at least involve a tow bill, because we're going to tow the vehicle in most cases. So, and that's probably the initial cost you're going to get. Depending on whether the implied consent law is violated, they may lose their license there on the spot, and it's going to cost money to get that back. Could be several hundred dollars possibly, so, what else?
Well, obviously, the legal cost of being represented, you know, if you choose to hire a lawyer, you're going to have to foot the bill, and obviously, the court cost, and we talked a little bit about, that individual's got to bear that. And also, the stigmatism that's kind of go with that, that you've got a criminal record that's going to follow you all your days. So, obviously, that has to be factored in to the hit.
And I just think, once that DUI stop is made, nearly every law enforcement agency within this county has cameras, so all of it is videotaped, there is that record, and unfortunately, if you have had so much to drink, that behavior is documented, and depending on how you choose to handle your case, may be on display for a jury of 12 men and women from this community. There is certainly a long process that's involved. Implied consent within the state of Tennessee very simply means that when you get a driver's license, you agree to provide a blood or a breath sample if you are stopped for DUI and it's requested. And so often, if you reject it or refuse to do so, that is an automatic suspension of your license for one year. If you agree to it, right now, based on several court rulings, oftentimes, there will be a blood draw that's required, and we take those costs from the hospital, and those come back to the defendant. So, the cost of going to the hospital, and the hospital drawing blood is a cost that comes about. If you refuse, we're still likely going to get a search warrant, and you're still going to get the cost associated with that blood draw. Because the Tennessee Bureau of Investigation is so backed up in terms of blood tests, it may be eight to 12 weeks, and if there's a suspicion of some sort of a controlled substance or some other substance, it could be four to five months before we get that back. So, you're in limbo, the case is still out there pending, it can take up to a year, more than a year, to resolve those cases. Expenses for an attorney could be anywhere, depending on, you know, who the attorney is and what's involved, $500 into thousands of dollars. There are mandatory fines in the hundreds of dollars, there is a requirement to attend an alcohol and driver's safety school, that charge comes into play. There is a mandatory, for a first offender DUI, 48 hours in the county jail, so depending on your circumstance, you may lose some work time with that. And as Lieutenant Russell said, it goes with you for the rest of your life. There are some crimes within the state of Tennessee, even on a first offense, that you can have expunged or taken off your record, but DUI is not one of them. So, if you've got a DUI based on a decision you made at 19, when you're 39 or 49, it is still going to be there, traveling with you, if you have an employer that's doing a background check.
And I would add that we have folks in counseling that the other cost would be, we keep thinking about individually and getting pulled over, but what if you were drinking and driving, and you got into an accident with somebody else and killed somebody? Then you're looking at more legal costs.
Yeah, I have a question. In terms of, with the Williamson County Anti-Drug Coalition, we receive funding to do more compliance checks and things of that nature in the community, and work with the partnerships that we have with you all and others. But the question is, what, as a community, in the community, and as a community leader, what can we do as a community to work with you all to make this, like, not vanish, but decrease the amount of alcohol use in our area?
The thing that I remember most about my years as a DARE officer, when I was teaching it, was reaching out to parents at all the opportunities we had to remind them to always know who your kid's friends are, and that's something that I don't think we ever get to those parents enough, to keep them informed, and coalitions such as yours, or this one. If there's ways to get in with the school system, out here in the community with these kind of town hall meetings where parents can get that message, I mean, I think that the bottom line here is, it's been said many times, these parents think they're doing the right thing. They don't know. They think by being a friend, that they're helping their child, or their child needs that, but the bottom line is, they need to be parents, and getting that message across is something we have failed at, to be a parent first, and to talk to them about knowing all of these people your kid's associating with, because I would say that Blake probably had friends that were doing it as well as him, and maybe their parents or his parents didn't realize who all was involved, and how much of it was involved.
Well, on that note, let me also ask, and something that Dr. Boyd also said, but for all the panelists, first of all, what could parents, since this is being videotaped, and hopefully, a lot of parents will be watching this, what are some of the signs and symptoms that parents might look for to see that, you know, that might trigger that my child is drinking? And as law enforcement officers, I'm sure there are probably some hiding places you might be able to share that you might have found in your years of law enforcement, that, you know, favorite hiding places for kids, and maybe where they're drinking. Some of the data from the PRIDE study said that a lot of the kids, when they're drinking, are not drinking at home, but they're usually drinking when they go to a friend's house, so, just wanted to see if you could speak to that a little bit, some of those signs and symptoms.
Can I just simplistically say, as a parent, if you're not following your child on Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, whatever it is, make sure you do. It is surprising to me oftentimes how many of these young people will post photos of themselves drinking at various parties, when it is so clear that they are underage. And oftentimes, those photos come into play during a criminal prosecution if the parent says, well, I didn't know, and there's the parent in the picture. So, from our perspective, one thing I would encourage parents to do is make sure you look at those pictures, and look at what your child and his or her friends are posting on all of these social media sites, because that'll give you a clue as to what they're doing.
And that is a big deal right now, because a lot of the kids are getting on Facebook and the Twitter and things like that, and they're talking, and a lot of parents aren't checking. They just assume that it's okay. It's, everybody else is seeing it, but they're not seeing it because they're not on there. Just all their friends are seeing it. So, it's very subtle that the parents will get on there and hold them accountable for text messages, make sure they're sending proper texts, they're not receiving improper texts. Make sure, check their messages in Facebook. You get the indicators right there. Just last night, ironically, we actually were searching for a child, and went to his girlfriend's house, and the first thing mom said, and we talked to her, was, get down here, give him your phone right now. And she reads her text. Every day, she'll go through her phone, and she reads a text. She has the passwords to her Facebook, she has the passwords through the Instagram and Twitters. She can get on there any time she wants to, and search through that, and make sure she's doing what she's supposed to be doing, just holding them accountable.
Yeah, I'd say, you know, back in the old days, when you had a party, you would call people, or you would just talk to them face to face, but now, it's social media, and if you're following your child on those social media sites, if they're involved in that, chances are, you're going to see something. And we're getting more and more of people saying, hey, I saw this on Facebook, there's supposed to be a party at this address. And a lot of times, it's hellish parties, you get out of control, because it gets advertised out there on Instagram and other places, and people come that are not invited, and they'll bring alcohol and other things into that party. So, I totally agree, you got to keep up with your kids. It used to be, and it still is, search their room, go through it from time to time, but now, you've got to, you've got to search their social sites, too, and be involved in their internet life, basically, and get involved in that, just like you would as far as knowing who their friends are, and also who their friends' parents are. I would say, talk to the parents of your child's friends, and bring this issue up, find out where they stand on it, and tell them where you stand on it. And if parents start working together, and networking together, and talking with each other about it, I think that would help the problem as well.
I think if parents wanted to get information about signs and symptoms, one, the Williamson County Anti-Drug Coalition, because we have so many members from the community, and that are experts in their field, could give you free information, or talk to you, or direct you at least in the right place. Typically, the best thing you're going to look for is a change in behavior. So, sometimes it's hard to tell, it's going to be, are they sleeping too much, are they not sleeping? Depending on what drug they're using, what they're mixing, you know, slurred speech, escalated attitude, maybe they're not wanting to go to school, their grades have dropped, they're not hanging around the same friends, they're hanging around different friends, they're getting sick, they're maybe not coming in by the time you want them to come in, they're not allowing you to look at anything with social media. They, you can look for physical signs, like their pupils, and, you know, are they sniffing their, you know, sniffing, doing things like this. So, I think it's best, there's so many signs and symptoms, it's best to kind of get educated on that, and then just watch. But the main thing is, is you know your child. When your child comes home, if their behavior's changing, then start checking into things.
May I just ask, Blake, maybe if you can tell us, were there signs or something that you think maybe was missed, or things that you were doing to hide your use of alcohol that maybe would be helpful to parents and others out there? You may need to get near a mic.
Okay. Signs. What? just changes in behavior, sleeping too much, um, too hopped up, um, getting depressed, overly excited, um. I think that's it. Thank you.
I have another question. With graduation approaching here for a lot of high school students, in terms of, since we have different cities here and within Williamson County, what is the best that we can do, or have you seen in your areas? Is party patrol something that you do in your areas? If you hear about a party going on, do you, is it a tip, allow for that? And if not, you think that's an effective measure to have in your city?
One thing that we did this year was, we initiated tip soft in each high school, and we're going to middle schools in the fall. So, students can send an anonymous tip to principal, their SRO, through texting, the tip, tip soft, as they have a code for each high school, and they remain anonymous, and we've gotten several, we've gotten several of drug dealers at schools and other things since we initiated this a couple of months ago. And we did it this spring, instead of waiting because of graduation, to see if, and we're waiting to see what happens, if we do get some. But that's one of the things that we know they have available, they all know about it. We put posters up, teaching them how to do it, and some of them already have, so we're reaching out to allow them to reach out to us that way in the school.
A lot of times, the county will include us with stuff. If it's in our area, they'll include us with some of that. We've had a few tips that come from them that we've helped out with, if it's in the city and things like that. The officers themselves that get out in the community have a good rapport with some of the kids, and they'll pass tips that way. We'll go do knocking talks. If we get the call, we'll just go knock on the door, talk to them, see what's going on. That's the best way to deal with it. If you just overlook it, that's when bad things start happening.
And there's absolutely no reason not for the parent to do the investigative work themselves. I can tell you an experience I had with my teenage daughter many years ago. Everybody was going to be there, it was going to be a cool party, but it was going to be okay, it was going to be fully chaperoned. And my wife's not from Missouri, but she's one of those, I got to see this for myself, said, I've got to meet them. And my daughter was just humiliated, but she went in and investigated that there was none of the adult there. We pulled out of the area, and about 20 minutes later, the sheriff's department came and took several of them away. So, you know, I think that we heard, you know, earlier from Captain Langley, and from General Heffler, that you're not there to be the friend, you're there to be the responsible adult and help them get through it. So, if it doesn't sound right, look right, feel right, do a little further investigation. And that's the greatest deterrent to let them go to that place they shouldn't be.
I don't really have anything much different. We're always taking tips, and we'll act on tips. If we have a tip on a party, we don't necessarily do a party patrol, but our officers that are working the street are certainly aware of, you know, if we get a tip in, they will go, and like Fairview, if we have a possibility of a party happening, we'll put officers in that area, and if we get an opportunity, we may do some talking with neighbors and things. A lot of times, we just get it from a concerned citizen. They see something happening, they'll just call our non-emergency number, and give us the information, and we'll send officers over there just to investigate, just to make sure. And sometimes, it's just a legitimate party, and maybe it's loud music or- And sometimes, it's just a legitimate party and maybe it's loud music or whatever. But we investigate, we find there are adults there. There's no alcohol being served and everything's fine. So, but if we find alcohol being served to underage, then we're going to prosecute from there.
And from with the sheriff's department, in terms of retail establishments and providing alcohol to underage teenage, you know, teenagers, underage individuals, is that something that's a really big problem here in the county? And if so, is that being addressed?
Well, that's something that, yes, from time to time it is. I mean, just like what Fairview's been real effective doing the last year or two. We've had instances in different parts of the county. We've had to do the same thing through the years. And I'm sure it happens in Brentwood too. It's just, it depends on, you know, sometimes you'll get a new person in or some people will start working at a convenience store that know a lot of young people. And once they start doing that, the word usually gets back. And when that happens, then we have officers who do what Fairview's been doing. They go in there and try to make buys. But it's gone on for, ever since I've been here in the county for over 25 years. And I'm sure it'll be going on years from now. As long as there are people who feel sympathetic and think it's okay, they're going to try to find ways to get the alcohol to them. And that's the real problem, more than the retailers. Getting that thought process changed to where people don't want to help a teenager get it.
You all may have spoken about this earlier because I was late, I'm sorry. Are the numbers in the county shifting at all? Are you seeing an increase in city and county in terms of the number of kids and underage drinking coming through? Just over the last five to 10 years, have you seen an increase?
Actually, I think that, I mean, from year to year, we're seeing a little bit of a decrease based on the PRIDE survey data. And that's when we survey 7th, 9th, and 11th graders. So, we are seeing a little bit of a decrease. But I think, just to follow up with what we're all seeing, is that there's still teenagers that are having parties and that are drinking, are still, you know, underage drinking at friends' houses. So, that's still something going on. So, whether, you know, it's, you know, 4% or 5% or if it's 15%, I think that that's still something that is an issue that we as, as far as star specialists and with the Williamson County Anti-Drug Coalition, that's one of the things that we're targeting. And what we want to try to get out there to the parents to help educate them, not only about the legal aspects, but also to encourage them to just communicate with their kids. Because I think that that's one thing that we can all agree on, is that it starts with the parents. And it starts with being a parent and not a peer, not being a friend, but also communicating with your kids. If you let your kids go out, be there when they get home. The first person they should expect to walk into is going to be a parent. To talk to them and have a conversation with them. And, you know, and it's not wrong as a parent to investigate, to make sure that they were where they were supposed to be and that they made good decisions when they were there. So, if a kid starts seeing that, then they're going to start modeling that behavior because they're going to know they're going to get caught. Unfortunately, a lot of times, and being as, and over the star specialist in the county, what I always hear in and out and what I've heard as a star specialist filling in, is a lot of times for the teenagers, once they start seeing that, "Okay, my parents are asleep when I get home," or "They trust me." So, they're teenagers. You know, I mean, they are not always going to make the right decisions. And as a parent, we are, you know, being naive and unrealistic to have the expectation that they will. So, it's our job to be that parent, to be the person to let them know and to not let them make that decision, basically. We're making the decision for them because we're going to be communicating. We're going to be there to reinforce that.
General Helper, are you seeing an increase? I mean, I know we are growing so much, 32,000 kids in the school system. Is it relative to growth or is it a little bit more than that?
I think it's probably a mixture. I feel like we're seeing more cases come through, perhaps even juvenile court, because I know the insight class we do seems to be fuller every time we do it. I know that we've had, over my tenure, recently more house parties or more people hosting house parties. And I think that it's the awareness that we're seeing. It may be that, certainly, that the population is growing, but I think due to social media, due to folks calling when there's a loud party or parties getting bigger than maybe what they used to be. Kids putting stuff out there on Twitter, whatever it might be, that the awareness amongst law enforcement is heightened. And because of that, I think we're seeing more folks come through the court system just because of that awareness and the efforts being put forth. And again, as all of these agencies are doing, I think they're really trying to send that message to retailers that you need to make sure that they are of age before they purchase alcohol. And I think, again, some of that is the Williamson County Anti-Drug Coalition has worked very hard to put some of those programs in place so that we can, if we do this next year, come back to you and say, "You know what? Our numbers have gone down."
Sure. What about getting individual homeowners associations involved in just having some, maybe even just to be kind of a catalyst for bringing parents together, just to be able to talk? And I know it's a discussion that's very hard for parents to even have with each other. If they share too much, their child might be, you know, "Oh, that's going on. I don't want you near my, you know, my daughter or my son." And so, my impression is parents hold up a lot inside until they meet each other in a very unusual place. Maybe it's juvenile or maybe it's, you know, in the counselor's office and go, "Oh, you're having problems too." But rather than it get to that point, parents be more encouraged. And I know in middle school, Grassland used to have a program years ago where parents came in during the day for like a lunch informational. I think it might be helpful for the school system to consider how to provide that. And not so much as a therapy group or anything like that, but more of just a place where parents can really meet each other to talk about some of the parental challenges they have. Once they hit middle school, once they hit the driving age, that's when it seems to all shift. Somebody's driving, somebody got their license, now they're... That's when you lose touch. I mean, even more than the, the social media is definitely a part of it, but the driving takes it to another total level. So, if anybody wants to speak to that, maybe through the coalition that that could happen, I'm not sure.
Well, and I will just address it briefly. We had a session in Brentwood about a month ago, was it?
Yes.
And at Brentwood High School. And I think there were more than 100 parents showed up to talk about social hosting issues. I've noted that depending on the various schools, that some counselors have been more aggressive in the schools where my office has participated on a variety of topics. But I think certainly, I know that the Franklin Police Department has a very active neighborhood watch. I'm not sure about some of these other departments, but I think that's an excellent idea as another avenue to reach out to people in the community and people that are probably like-minded because the kids are all in that same neighborhood.
I think it's more of a parents of teens, not neighborhood watch. Parents of teens are all going through the same thing. They have children who are developing, who are not making good decisions. And they might be a 4.0 or they might be a 1.5 student. They are all under a lot of pressure and stress socially, educationally. We live in a very high per capita income community. And that, "Am I going to fit in at whatever level I'm in?" takes over. And so, I do think parents need a lot of professional support just getting through about five to six years at least. So, obviously, I'm a parent. But I would ask one other question. How do you all handle parties that are held where somebody's gone out of town and left, maybe they've left an 18-year-old in charge and then a party is held at that home? What is the situation there for those parents?
If the parents are unaware, then there is no prosecution in the state of Tennessee. To address your other question too, I've been involved with our neighborhood watch in the county for a number of years. And as a matter of fact, we have some new people that I will pass this suggestion on to. One of the things I've noticed is that depending on the neighborhood, we have a lot of young children. And then we have neighborhoods that have a lot of teenagers. So, it's something you would focus in particular areas because I know subdivisions that I've worked in that now hardly any children are there at all. They've got them all in college or all of them out married and it's only older people. But there are some now that have advanced from that stage where they all had little ones, that they're all now getting close to the driving age. You would just want to concentrate that thought, I think, to those.
Sure.
And we'll suggest it to our neighborhood watch people.
And just to also follow up from just the star specialist's perspective is that we do try to do parent nights. We try to address whatever the need is that we see at the school. We did one at Franklin High. I think we did one at Brentwood High. And then we also do have a parent, it's like a parent luncheon learn. They did one at Brentwood Middle School this year where parents got together and did just what you talked about. Absolutely. So, we did that for it. I think it went on all year. So, you know, any parent that wants to come and attend and talk about numerous topics can. And then something that we are starting to try over the past couple of years is to start getting more parent involvement and, you know, parents taking a right stand. We have a very active group at Ravenwood. And last year was the first year that they actually did an after-prom event where those parents that were in charge of that did something to try to encourage students to make a better choice. And then they provided an option. And they had, you know, actually, I think that they had more students attend than what they expected. So, that was great. And this year, they did it again and they had even more of a turnout. So, that's something that we are trying to implement across the county and all of the schools. So, just to get, but just getting those parents involved. And sometimes, it's easier in some schools than others, but it is something that we're definitely willing. So, if any parent is watching and you have questions or you would like to do that, contact your star specialist if it's a middle or high school.
Thank you, every one of you, for what you do.
And I'm going to go back just on something that Captain Laney said. There may not be prosecution against the homeowner or the parent, but there likely will be prosecution against that 18-year-old or whoever it is that's running that party, depending on what's going on.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is the end of our town hall meeting. I want to thank, first of all, the panel for coming out from your different organizations and coming out and speaking to us today. Also, want to thank our facilitator from Stars Nashville, Sandra Schumar.
You're close.
And I also want to thank Blake with me as far as coming out and giving a great speech, bringing the reality to what we're looking for in terms of letting them know that teenage finish drinking is not okay and social hosting is not okay. So, I thank you for that. I also would like to thank the Williamson County Anti-Drug Coalition, especially the Beer's Drinking Committee, for putting this on and coming up with the ideas to have this town hall meeting to provide you all with. For more information, you can go to our website. And for parent tips and solutions to some of these problems that we discussed tonight, you can go to myWCADCTN.org for more information. And we look forward to having this discussion again and having some more solutions to the problems that we have. Thank you. Have a great night.